First order business to make a change to uh.
I move to approve.
Got a motion and a second to approve, all of those in favor? Minutes approve. Alright, let's get on to some new business here. First order business, ZV five four eight two, eleven oh six Cedar Street. Consider variance to Glen County zoning ordinance section seven two zero to reduce required minimum rear yard setback from fifty feet to twenty five feet. Construction of the new, for the construction of a new building. Property is located eleven oh six Cedar Street, parcel number zero three dash zero eight nine two zero, and zone general industrial. Chris Amos, agent for Bruce Flexer, owner. Here for staff, please.
Good morning, Board of Appeals members. Stephanie Leaf Planning Manager, this is ZV fifty four eighty two. This is the property located on Cedar Street, right here. So there are several different parcels that are part of this, this property. And I think they either, they already have or they will be combining those into one. There's an existing building on the adjacent parcel as well. They, their zoning is general industrial, so the setbacks are a little more restricted than some of other zonings. So there is a front yard setback of fifty feet, side of twenty, and rear fifty feet when they are abutting another, another residential, a residential zone. And that is the case in this property, they are abutting a residential zone. So they are requesting a variance to allow the setback that's adjacent to the R six lots to, to be twenty five feet instead of the fifty feet that's required. They are intending to move their current existing custom apparel and promotional item production facility that's currently on the adjacent lot to this new, new building they will be planning to build if a variance is granted. The Maryland Planning Commission did issue, or did approve a site plan for this property on June sixth, twenty twenty three, pending that the situation is remedied with the setbacks. And here's a survey of the property, and this is Cedar Street, and then the adjacent residential lots are back here. And this is their proposed building, right here. And they are showing the twenty five foot setback here, and they will have a, a buffer in this rear area, so there would be a buffer, a landscape buffer between the building and the residential lots. And these are your possible motions. Staff is recommending approval of this rezone due to economic hardship associated with the property. This is an existing non-conforming lot in the GI zone due to lot size, and so there are some restrictions just based off, off of that in the zoning. So Ms. Amos is here representing the applicant today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions for staff? Okay, moving on, can we hear from Apka or Representative, please?
So my name's Chris Amos, I'm with CSCC Incorporated. This parcel was originally zoned when the Glen County zoning ordinance was adopted as GI. You can see, as Stephanie mentioned, there are multiple parcels that are being recombined into one that brings the lot area to point eight five acres for the combined parcel. The GI section of the ordinance requires a parcel size of three acres with a minimum set, with a minimum rear yard setback of fifty feet. The, the use of this building is consistent with LI, and we wanted to rezone it to LI so that we could get the setback to twenty five feet. But the, the LI, the parcel would still be substandard, and so we can't rezone it to a substandard use, even though it's substandard now, more substandard now than it would be when we combine the parcels. So this is what we're, have decided is the best path forward is to get a reduction in the setback. As you see on the site plan, we do have a landscape buffer, all of the uses, all of the entry and all of that on the building is out the side or the front. Parking is in the front, there are no uses, nothing directed to the rear at all. And we've also agreed to put a, a wall or a solid fence up along the property line as well. So I can answer any other questions that you might have.
Is there been discussion with any neighbors or anything about?
Uh, nobody showed up. We actually went to the, didn't we go to the MPC for the zoning?
Uh, for the site plan.
Just for site plan. So there was nobody, nobody showed up when we got site plan approval. There was, nobody from the neighborhood showed up. And two, two of the parcels that are behind us are actually a church. So we have three parcels that were abutting that are residentially zoned. Well, the church is residentially zoned, but it's not being used as a residence.
You have time, please.
I'm sorry?
Oh, there's somebody raising a hand, somebody raising a hand back there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you'll, you'll have an opportunity in a minute, sir.
Yeah, sorry, if I could add to that, we did actually, we did hear from a neighbor though. So there is a neighbor, a relative of the neighbor that did contact us because the, the property owner has some medical issues. They did talk with one of our staff members and also reached out to Commissioner Booker. So there, they did have some concerns with, with the buffer. They, I don't, I don't know if they were able to be here today, and it might be, this gentleman might be representing that property. But I just wanted to mention that.
Okay.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
The Zone B buffer, it's going to be some desensitization plant material?
Yes, we have a bunch of existing trees that are behind the building now. And then the rest of the buffer is going to be planted as required by the Glen County zoning ordinance.
And what kind of solid fence did they have in mind?
I'm not sure what exactly we're using for the solid fence. Once again, that has to meet the requirements of the ordinance. The ordinance specifies what that solid fence has to consist of, and that's what we, it gives us several options if I remember correctly, but then it's going to be one of those options.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright.
Is the old building going to be demolished?
No, he is going to continue to use the old building for some administrative functions or for storage or something, but it's going to stay there.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this variance? Okay, here none. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against it? If you have any, if you're here in reference to this, sorry, if you have anything to say or? Okay, if you could come to the podium, please, state your name. Yeah, just tell us your name for the record and?
Uh, my name is Alvin Allen. And my sister, she's in the hospital up in Atlanta. So I guess she had talked to Mr. Booker, Alan Booker, about the property that's behind the, um, the T-shirt shop.
Okay, did, did you have any concerns or she have any concerns or were those addressed when she spoke?
She just told me to show up.
That sounds like something my sister would do.
All that's in her hands.
Okay.
Yeah, they just told me to show up.
Okay, alright, good. Do you know, Stephanie said that they did speak with Mr. Booker and, and staff. Okay, so I'm assuming those concerns were addressed or?
Yeah, I spoke with Ms. Cleo, correct? Yep, and she had some concerns about the buffer and where exactly everything was. But yeah, she wasn't, she wasn't able to be in attendance today.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Y'all through with me?
Yep, you're good, thanks, sir.
Turned down.
Alright, gentlemen, any discussion, comments? Okay, anybody want to make a motion one way or the other?
I would, I'd like to make a motion that we approved ZV fifty four eighty two as stated.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Alright, congratulations, you got the variance. Alright, moving on down the line to the next order of business. They gave us some computer reminders, so let's change our system a little bit. Alright, number two, ZV five four nine five, four one zero seven Oglethorpe Drive, Sea Island. Consider variance to the Glen County zoning ordinance section seven zero two point five to reduce the minimum front yard setback from twenty feet to five point nine feet to bring the structure into conformance at forty one oh seven Oglethorpe Drive, Sea Island. Partial number zero five zero 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 two nine. Property is zoned R twelve, one family residential. Christopher Young, agent for Craig and Lee Williams, owners. Can I hear from staff, please?
Good afternoon, Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you today, we have an application for reduction in the front yard setback. Here is the site. The applicant is requesting relief from the twenty foot required setback to reduce it down to five point nine feet to bring the structure into conformance. The site is zone R nine, where the front yard setbacks are twenty feet, and there is a permit for current ongoing interior renovation. Here is the site. As you see there, a red hash line is where the front yard setback is, and the distance from the right of way is five point nine feet. The distance from the road bed is quite a bit away. Here are some pictures of the property. The lower corner is the garage. And here are your possible motions, and staff does recommend approval as presented.
Okay, um, the garage that is there, and this may be a question for the owner, is it, is it existing, was it built with the original house?
I believe it's been there for quite some time. I believe it is with original to the house. I did speak with the owner when I placed the sign on the site, and he said it was, it was original to the house, and it was there when he purchased it.
Okay, then why, I guess my question is, why the need for the variance here? If it was existing, wouldn't that be considered administrative and not have to come to us unless there are plans to do something different with that space?
I'm not sure it could, so you can go either route, and they, they chose to go this route.
But they, they are actively renovating?
They are actively renovating.
Inside of the house?
Yes.
Anybody else got any questions for staff?
There you go, thank you. Uh, new technology up here. Do you know what year the house was built?
I don't have it in front of me at the moment, I believe it was the seventies or forties, one of the two.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for staff? Alright, thanks, sir. Alright, can we, is there someone here for the applicant? Can we hear from them, please? Interesting, okay. Alright, well, I guess moving on then, is there anyone here to speak in favor of? All right, well, I guess moving on then, is there anyone here to speak in favor of? Okay, hearing none, is there anyone here to speak against this particular variance?
I thought somebody had to be here.
They're not required to, in their best interest, but they're not required to.
All the, the applicant has to have somebody here.
No comments?
Being nobody's here to define what the, what's going on, I, I mean, it's hard to make it a yay or a nay, 'cause if they're, if they're doing some work to the, to the garage and/or what the percentage of the construction was, I'd like to know what, I'd like to know what to do, and before we just give them, give them an approval.
Yeah, if you wanna defer, that would be a good option. I think I'll probably give them an opportunity, or we could rule on it as it is.
Your call.
Well, we could. I mean, I, I mean, we could rule on it as it is, but, you know, out of fairness to them, I'd like to at least give them an opportunity to hear their side, so.
I agree with that.
Yeah, 'cause I, I, I have some questions, especially in the, Mr. Chairman, especially in the application, when they talk about a cloud of title issue, no pun intended, that was a little cloudy for me in terms of the wording, since they just purchased the house, I believe, a year ago, and the title must have cleared, and so, it strikes me that there's not a title issue, and the fact that we are, when I was there yesterday viewing the property, I mean, we're creating a whole lot of buildable land for the future by reducing from 20 to 5.9. And so, I, I had some, some big questions around that whole issue, so I would not be in, in favor of an approval right now, for me.
Okay. Anyone wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we defer this one to the, to the next meeting, until we can get clarification from the owners as to what their intent is to do for, do with this.
Got a motion and a second on the floor to defer? Okay, that's good to know. Uh, all right, all those in favor of the motion to defer? Opposed? All right, defer to the next meeting. All right, moving on down the list. Item number three, ZV 5513, 908 Ocean Boulevard, St. Simons Island. Consider variance to Glen County zoning ordinance section 705.5 to reduce the minimum side yard setback from 15 feet to zero to bring the structure into conformance at 908 Ocean Boulevard on St. Simons. Parcel number 04-04075. The property is zoned Resort Residential, Brad Brumbach, agent for Doug Allison, owners. From staff, please.
Good afternoon, Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you today, we have a application to reduce the side yard setback. Here is the site. This property is zone RR Resort Residential, where the side yard setbacks are 15 feet for multifamily structures. There is some question about a cargo container and deck on the site that are on the side of the property where the requested variance is, and those improvements, if they are deemed to be greater than 5%, would require site plan approval from the Island Planning Commission. There is an open code enforcement case on this property, and here is the current survey of the property. As you see, the existing structure is hashed and is right on the property line, I believe it's half of a foot away. And here are some pictures of the site. And here are some comments in opposition. And here are your possible motions. Staff recommends approval with the condition that all accessory structures meet setback requirements.
Okay. Anybody got any questions?
Didn't the opposition letter from the, that one you just showed, it said that they approved, that they didn't mind the structure as it's built now, they were just not in favor of any additional, like, you mentioned the deck and the?
Container? Yes, sir.
Uh, is that deck, that deck that I saw in that picture that's being framed, is that the deck you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Could you go back to that picture, please? So, that deck, that's not shown on my survey, then?
No, sir, it is not. Both of those improvements are not shown on the survey.
Is that deck encroaching into the setback as well?
Yes, sir.
How about the air conditioning units, are they in the setback also?
Yes, sir.
So, the deck is in the setback?
Yes, sir.
They're not, they're not encroaching beyond it?
Oh, they, the deck goes all the way up to the fence line.
What?
The deck goes all the way to the fence.
To the fence?
Yes, sir.
That's the property line?
Yes, sir.
Which is also the side of the house, correct? It was built as a zero. Was there a building permit issued for this to, for the renovation? 'Cause I, I live near there, and I've watched the renovation go on.
The initial renovation of the structure is approved, and, but the exterior renovation of the deck and the addition of the cargo container was, has not been approved.
But that's not, that's not part of our, we're, we're only here for the existing business, right?
Correct.
That's not part of our?
Those things are purview technically included, because if you were to approve the variance, those structures would be added in.
Oh, I didn't.
So, that's, that's why I made a recommendation that approve the, with the condition that accessory structures meet setback requirements.
Okay.
Okay. Can you go back to that picture, Chris, please? Yes, I, I need you to help me unpack a little bit of this, because it turns out it's a bit confusing for me. When I was reading through the packet, I thought it talked about a garage, no, it talked about an ingrade deck and an accessory building.
Yes.
Then, that was the background information. Then, when I read the applicant's paperwork, they talked about a 20 by 12 pool and a 20 by 20 garage, if I understood the, the survey correctly.
Yes, so.
So, and I was on the wrong side of the house to begin with, 'cause I could never see that from the road. I couldn't, I couldn't figure out, obviously, I don't go on the property, so when I parked in front, I thought everything was on the driveway side, so this is the first time that I'm seeing this, so it kinda like changes my whole, whole paradigm of the questions I was going to ask, and so it's not on the driveway side, it's on?
Yes, sir.
So, that, but that container is there, and then they're proposing a garage and a swimming pool with a deck that's already into the setback. So, like, where's all this going? If it's not going, like, on the other side? We're talking about 20 by 12, 20 by 20.
It's on the side, sir.
Yeah, it's setback on the back.
So, it's all across the back?
Yeah, so actually, the, the container's actually sitting right here, and this, and this is the deck right here, this is the driveway side.
Right, but what I'm saying is, oh, and here's the, see, but here's the pool, here's the garage, and this comes all the way out to that driveway, doesn't it?
It's in the setback.
Or up to it, it looks like.
Right.
And so, that was gonna lead me to the ques, so then, what I had here for a question, when they, when they talk about the garage, is that there's three units already, A, B, and C, and maybe it's not to you, I'll ask the, this prob, this question's not for you, I'm just kidding, I'm just trying to get some bearings here. All right, I'll, I'll wait for the applicant to come up and ask the rest of the questions. All right, thanks for explaining that. But it is, I did understand it correctly, right? There's a pool and a garage, we're talking, there's a container, a deck that's already in the setback, there's a container, place is under, there was an investigation, and now, on top of all that, we're talking about a pool and a garage, and so, there's no, so the, what's the accessory building?
The accessory building would be the container.
Okay. So, even though they put in the pool and the garage, that has nothing to do with the setback issue, 'cause it's within the boundary?
Right, the pool and garage are currently not on the site, so this, this is the condition of the site currently.
Okay.
Got you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody got any more questions for staff?
Uh, I have one. Chris, I know there's some talk about the air conditioning units, exterior units being on grade and allowed in the setback, but not above. Are they gonna change that, that requirement, or do you know?
I don't know. It also depends on the grade of the site, so the site might be in a flood zone, I haven't been able to confirm or deny that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Nope.
Okay, thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, is there a representative from the applicant here? Come, state your name, and?
Yeah, Brad Brumbach, for the owner, Doug Allison. The intent, we, we were using the storage container as, for, for beach items and other thing, the container guy said it was okay, we were, we should have checked. The deck, there's existing deck there now, we wanted to raise it and repair it with a new Trex deck, so that, we were just replacing what was there, and then, we'd like to repair the deck, the, the existing deck, and raise it to a new wood deck. We understand that the accessory structure would have to meet all the requirements. The pool would be in the current setback, and there's no plan for a garage at this time. And we would have to meet the, the requirements for that as well.
Okay.
So, he's saying the accessory building is, is permanent, is gonna, I mean, that?
It's a container.
Container's gonna stay there? That's not temporary for construction?
Well, we wanted it to, to use it, but if it doesn't meet the requirements, then we'll move it to where the garage side is, inside the setbacks.
Okay.
And we plan to buffer it with landscaping, if we're on that side.
So, looking, you?
Got my room for a buffer.
Yeah, so you had said that you're replacing the deck, but looking at the survey versus the pictures, the replacement looks much larger than what was existing.
That, that's not correct. Existing deck is, is larger than that, and then the HVAC units are in the setback as well. But they've been there, they were, I believe they were there when the owner purchased the property.
So, the HVAC is in, is within the setbacks?
No, sir, they're, they're, they're nestled against the house there.
Okay.
But they're inside the setback, I mean, they're?
They're, they're more than seven feet from the fence?
Would be 15 feet.
Yes, 15.
Or 15 on the, yeah, on the side. So, they're more than 15 feet away from the fence?
No, sir, they're, they're?
Okay, so they are in the setback, okay.
They're, they're in between, the house is shown in that picture, they're right against the house.
Can you pull that picture back up again, from Charter Day?
I mean, the house goes to the property line, and the HVAC units are right next to the house.
Yeah, where the setback line is pretty much at the back of that, back of that house, in fact, that overhanged eyebrow.
Correct, it's right at the corner of the house.
The eyebrow is sitting, is projecting beyond the setback, so those HVAC units are within the set, in, between the setback and the property line.
So, we're trying to bring those into, you know, compliance, and then we're trying to make that deck, so you can actually come out the back door to where the old deck was.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the options of using permeable pavers or something like that as opposed to a deck? 'Cause those are allowed and don't require variance in the setbacks, anything that is non-structural?
I think it would have to do with grade, but we could probably make it work.
You're looking at how close to grade that is.
It's about 16 inches.
You know, that, that would be an easy solution to not have to require the variance as you're doing on-grade permeable deck pavers.
When we did the site plan for the pool, the pool required to be up a little higher to get drainage.
Anybody else got any, any questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm good.
Thanks, sir. All right, is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of? Okay, hearing none, if there is anyone here that would like to speak against, please come to the podium, state your name, please.
Hi, I'm James Murray, JM Murray Construction, and I'm gonna try to clear this up a little I know the white structure because I permitted it, and I put a new exterior on it, and I passed all inspections on the interior space of that initial project. I'm not involved in the outside projects you're seeing right there, that's Brad, and Dave, and Doug. I'm here with a couple letters because I'm building the house that you're standing on the porch. This picture, the person standing on 912 Ocean on their deck, and you can touch that with a bass fishing pole, so it's about from here to her. Because the fence is on the property line, I've had that marked with SHOOP survey, the reason those air conditioning units, I'm trying to clear this up, is because it was approved in the less than 50% of the value of that property, we got an appraisal, and the improvements we were doing inside, outside, and everything were approved, and the air conditioning was already with a 70-year-old building that is grandfathered in to not have to meet the side setback. The survey doesn't look right at all to me, because if you look where Ocean Boulevard is, where the gentleman was standing, he couldn't see this container, because it's not where it's on the drawing, it's on the far-left corner of the property. The drawing makes no sense to me at all, but the deck, if you can look on it right now, you can see the old concrete jet that's on the survey, you can see it under the joist right there.
Yeah.
So, that's the existing deck, the existing patio, the deck's being brought over, and with that being done, it would put a new improvement into the setback requirement that you're, you're not grandfathered in anymore. You grandfathered in for the existing structure that is below flood zone, and it's eight inches from the property line. So, that makes it 7, 3 from ours to the fence, and eight more inches, so this is not a 14-foot opening for fire, whoever. But, um, the problem is, I mean, and I don't know everything about the zoning, but I don't know that containers are allowed, or they would have to be approved, but we're, we're within seven, eight feet of that container with our visibility on a house on Ocean Boulevard. And I have a letter from the owner of that property, and I have a letter from Mr. Newman that's behind that property. So, when you start talking about pools and drainage and all that, I'm curious as to how all that works out, 'cause you have houses all the way around that piece of property, and you see the fence that's been put up around it, but my, my appeal to you guys would be that if there are the ordinance and the setbacks and the code to be enforced, this would be a, one where, I've been building for 30 years, so I would wonder how many more pull this one up as an acceptance to doing other things, and no one that I can find around there wants to look at that metal container, and I, from my involvement with Doug before, I know that container is, they're planning on it staying there, and it would work as kinda like a gazebo. So, I'm not for it, neither are the owners. I'm, I'm gonna own half this property in about 30 days with an LLC, so that's what I'll be looking at, out the back deck.
Okay.
I just spent about a year and a half on this project. So, my question is be, how could it possibly, unless it meets all the requirements that are in order, so the deck doesn't meet it, the cargoes, obviously, it's being put in a setback, it's not abiding by the 15 feet. Even if it abided by the 15 feet, are we allowed to put containers in the property there for the other, all the neighbors are looking at that container? And so, just, let's just try to, whatever y'all put in place before, let's try to hold it, and I don't know what else to say. Do you want these letters?
Those letters, they're not in our packet, I assume, those are newsletters, and they're in opposition?
And there's another picture I have from the road, where if you look between the two houses, you can see that container, but you would have had to really try from the front. But if you're looking at 912, between 908 and 912, you can see it, but you can really see it from the five properties that are around it. And I own property on St. Simons, too, and I would hope that my neighbor in Compass Point wouldn't get a variance pass to do this next door to us, so.
Mr. Murray, I got a question, you did some work on that build, do you have any idea what during Hurricane Irma and Matthew?
Mr. Murray, I got a question. You did some work on that build. Do you have any idea what during Hurricane Irma and Matthew, did any flooding occur in those buildings?
From hearsay, because there's some, trying to think the other, you know, Vassakake bought this property and...
I, I can answer that question, because I live near there. I have a picture of those four mailboxes, and just the mailbox is sticking out of the water.
Yeah.
During the hurricane, I was standing there looking at it.
I think the water's been that high in that house before. So when we went to permit this, and we were asked, you know, we started doing cabinets and everything else, and we were caught, we were, first we were just gonna do some exterior renovation, blah, 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 and once we tore out the inside, it became electrical. Y'all, y'all remember John Cox? And we went through a lot of inspections. I think there's three builders on this board. But to get that white structure back into order and get it passed Glen County, I got prostate and everything else examined through that process. And, but those air-conditioning units, I don't feel like, I'm just being honest, they're already, they were there, they were at the elevation they are, they've been through all inspections, and they've been approved. So the white structure has a permit, and everything's been done according to that, and passed, and got a CO. It's just the, it's just the setbacks and any kind of ordinance that are in place, we're hoping that those will be upheld today. If you have any other questions, I'll be glad to try to answer. But that, that site plan, if you can find where Ocean Boulevard is, turn back to the site plan that shows the red lines, if you don't mind. And I may can use this little clicker. Okay, I'm hoping that this is Ocean, and I'm, I have glasses that can't see it. Okay, if that's Ocean, that's the house that's eight inches from the property line, our 912 sits right there, and, and that container is sitting right there on that fence line, and that deck is over that concrete pad right there. So I don't know what this is, other than the, he did talk about possibly putting a garage here and a swimming pool, but the things that we're here to object about are that beautiful container sitting right there, and that deck coming into that. This is grandfathered in, there's nothing we can do about it, it meets the, and it was, it was under the fifty-fifty value of improvements to that white structure. Not trying to hurt anybody, it's just, I do think that's a detriment to the property next door and the others around it.
Okay.
Okay, and then there's maybe this letter, so.
Yeah, we've got it up here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the question for staff, you may or may not be able to answer this, the, the containers, is there, are those allowed in that area? Do we know that definitively, or?
There is no prohibition to containers being used as storage. So if it were in the setbacks, it would be allowed to be there.
Okay. Alright. Okay, any comments? My personal feeling on it, I mean, the house is there, there's so many of them over here that are in the setbacks that have been there for a long time. It is what it is. We're, you know, we're not gonna move a house that's been there for fifty years or a hundred years, we get that. However, making changes too, we need to try to maintain what is here, so I personally am, I'm okay with what's there, I'm okay with air-conditioners staying where they are, we're certainly not gonna make anybody move that, but as far as doing new encroachments, I'm not in favor for be it a deck or the container. It's a big yard. There's plenty of room if they want to put the container, they can move the container over. The, the deck is actually a concrete pad that I see drawn there. You know, the ordinance reads that you can make improvements to maintain, but if you tear it down, then it has to come within compliance, so. You know, my thought is, I'm not in favor of it for the new additions, but that's just my opinion, colleagues can comment on there.
The container, if I was a neighbor, I would have concern with flooding. You got a twenty-eight-foot container floating down the road, tearing somebody else's property up. You know, I mean, I, I just, that's a, that's a big, and that's a, that's a good-looking renovation remodel. I mean, that's like buying a, buying a brand-new Cadillac and taking, taking one of the wheels off, putting a hubcap on it, and, and you, and you, now you're putting this container in the yard, but that's not my call. But that's, it's a good-looking building, and I'd hate to see, if it was mine, I wouldn't want a black eye with a container that I could see or any of my neighbors', but that's just a personal opinion. I mean, we have no say in, in ruling on that, and I, I agree with Cliff on, or Mr. Chairman on the, everything he said.
Is there, Chris, would, if, you know, if it did get moved, is it, I don't, you guys may even know, as far as securing a structure to prevent that, even like portable structures, you know, I know they made me tie them down. Would there, do you know if there'd be any kind of requirement, that it be secured to the ground? Like, like, because technically it's a portable structure, like one of these portable buildings we buy, so if it was within the setbacks, would they be required to secure it?
That would be a building code sort of thing. If it's under two-hundred square feet, it wouldn't require a permit. But if it's over two-hundred square feet, and I don't know the exact dimensions-
Gotcha, okay.
-of the container, but if it's over two-hundred square feet, it would, it would probably need to be bolted down.
Okay. I, I was just curious just to address Mr. Edgy's comment, because it certainly is a, I've seen him float, for sure.
We are still in the public hearing period. Are you gonna close it, or?
Yeah, do we have any more, any more discussion on, up here?
She did.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, my brain went somewhere else. Yeah, if you, if you still have something, if you have something to say, please, yes, come. Thank you, Nisi, sorry.
Thank you. My name is Twana King, and I am one of those property owners who can now look out my kitchen and breakfast room window and see the storage container. We are at 322, 324 Fifth Street. Bill and Cynthia Wood are also in our same complex there in 322. I think you have a letter from them as well. And my first concern is, is as I look through the packet of information, thank you guys, planning and zoning had no problem notifying us of this meeting. We received a letter from you guys. However, as I look through the packet, there's a page five of eight that this builder completed, I assume on behalf of the property owner, where he lists, it looks like he, it's, it's an application where maybe he would have gotten either consent or done, or disapproval from all the neighbors, and it looks like he never even attempted to contact either of us. He lists a person who was a form, was the original builder of the property. So I guess, from beginning, it feels real disingenuous to us. It feels like this builder started this process, no building permit for some of what he did, encroached on, you know, what the variance that should have been there, that the setback that should have been there, and then kind of threw this together, and really didn't want to hear from us. Because it would not have been difficult to contact it, or at least listed all the owners that were, that were impacted by this. So we have an issue with that, but, but that's not something for you guys, I apologize. But it looks like the builder retroactively is seeking this variance for the deck and the container, and then the concrete pad. We object to these structures being built, and we object to granting this variance, because it, it's one thing to have structures that are grandfathered in, I'm sure there are many of them, numerous thousands of them. However, if we continue to just grant more variances and allow more and more encroachment, why do we have the zoning regulations in the first place? Why don't we all go out and apply to get a variance, so that we can all extend whatever we want? It, it's just, it's setting a bad precedent. And we don't believe that the shipping container is a permanent structure. And I, it seems like you would want something that was permanent there, because I can tell you from the two storms we had, everything washed away that wasn't, that wasn't secure. So we urge you not to approve any variance to the setback requirements for this property. We have no problem with it being, with the, with the existing things being grandfathered in, but we are not supportive of any one grant, getting a variance to the setback rules.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning, I'm Deborah Dunne, and I own the property at 330 Fifth Street, which backs up to this property. My question is actually a very naive one, because I'm not that familiar with the zoning and the variances. He does not specifically request a zoning variance on that side. So if you were to grant him a zero-foot variance, could he later apply that to the other side of the property? It doesn't designate really whether it's just east or west. It looks like it applies to the whole property, asking for that variance. Am I just being naive?
It, there, I don't think there's a, it doesn't specifically say which, which lot line. However, the lot line, the setbacks are different. So that if it were granted on this being, I guess that's the north lot line, it would apply to that one, if granted.
Only that one?
Only that one, correct.
Not just both sides?
I, I don't know.
I think, I think the, if we grant a variance, it'd be specific-
Specific-
-to the, to what we granted for.
Okay.
I mean, they couldn't come build something else in there.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
It'd just be like that.
But we are-
If we did.
We're still definitely opposed to this variance, so.
And as far as the container, I'm not even sure that's in our purview, I-
I know, and it's so ugly, but.
Well, I agree with that, but I don't know if we can do anything for or against that.
Okay, thank y'all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else have any comments? Okay, hearing none?
I have a, I want to. Mr. Brumbach, could I ask you a few questions, please?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for coming back up. It's very interesting. I just want to say, as a disclaimer, I did not speak to the woman who just spoke. But my question's for you, as I was going back through this, exactly what she had just said. Had, I've had some issues from the get-go on, on the way the applicant, the application was filled out. And so, when, the first thing was, as she said, and it was not naive, the applicant is requesting a variance of Glen County zoning, section internet, to reduce the minimum side yard setback fifteen to, fifteen to zero, so. And I'll get to a question at some point, I promise. Never talked about which side. Then, as someone else, as the other speaker brought up, and I had a concern, when Mr. Allison filled out the application, he put in, he took the liberty of putting five people's names down with their addresses, but didn't bother putting in approval or, or disapproval. And I felt that was a little disingenuous in terms of creating a public document and a legal document, putting people's names and addresses down without either permission and/or without completing it. So I'll get to my, I just wanted to say that. Get to my question. How long has he owned the property?
I believe it's roughly a year, maybe a year and a half.
Okay. And certainly meaning no disrespect to what you said earlier, I just pay attention to a lot of wordsmithing from past practice in dealing with negotiations. You mentioned that we're gonna have, the place will be landscaped. Well, I don't ever, I don't, I, I didn't feel like there was any kind of landscaping that was, has been added to that property in the time that Mr. Allison has owned the property, but besides that, you answered the chairman, I forget exactly what he was asking you, but you used the word, "Yeah, we're trying, we're trying to do that," and then another one of your answers was, "We probably will." And I just wanted to share with you that I felt that that wasn't very helpful to me in terms of working through to some kind of, some kind of solution to the, to the situation. And I guess the questions I had for you, but it's, as I've been shared, told, it's kind of out of our purview in terms of the, the pool and the garage. But when you talk about in the application, the accessory building, can you tell me, in your words, what the accessory building's going to be? It's a deck and an accessory building?
The accessory building they're referring to is the container. And we understand that we would have to meet site plan approval for that. We're not discussing the container this time. I mean, we have no intent to violate any, you know, setback requirements on a container. If, if it's not allowed, then we'll move it. The issue here was the existing house, the county said we need a variance to bring the existing house into compliance, and then the deck that we wanted to put in between the two houses essentially, to make a usable deck. If, if it's not allowed, that's fine, we'll take it down and put the, the pavers in. Our intent's not to, to go against anybody or create an eyesore. The intent is to have a pool and a nice backyard. He has landscaped the front very nicely, and the intent wants the pool is in, in the backyard to landscape it very nicely. We're not trying to upset any of the neighbors. I mean, fifty percent of the neighbors around here have structures in the setback. And, you know, and they, they don't have to bring them up to compliance, and we're not, we're not saying that's right or wrong. We just want the ability to, to put the pool in the backyard and to put the deck in.
Am I correct to say that if you're, if the house is grandfathered in, Mr. Chairman, if the house is grandfathered in, then it's not out of conformance, right? Or is it still considered non-conformance, but grandfathered?
Yeah, there's, and I guess, because typically, when they're non-conforming, they're addressed with an administrative variance, when you're just documenting what is there, because the case, the house has been there since way back when. So that would technically be an administrative variance for what is existing, where the, the issue is, is making additions and changes, being this deck and the container and all that, that's just within the setback, so it's, you know, in my mind, the variance that we're addressing is the deck and the container. The house is, is in fact grandfathered and, you know, would be treated as an administrative, to document what is there and has been there.
That, that's what I was getting to, and I want to see if I make sure I was saying it accurately. It just seemed to me that this variance had to do with bringing, I thought it was set in there, once again, the variance had to do with bringing the house into conformance. But if it's already grandfathered, then that's a moot point, and then it was like the little, I just feel like this whole, the whole thing is like, as I'm reading through it and spending time with it, then all of a sudden, if you, if you go into the weeds, so to speak, it's like, oh, there's an accessory building and an, and an in-grade deck, where, well, there's a deck being built there already in the setback. And then, not to be redundant, like I said, I spent the time yesterday morning, I'm trying to figure out, I can't see the container on the other side. I actually thought you were getting rid of the driveway, and I had all kinds of questions for you about parking, and if it was gonna be a fourth unit, because the way that application was written, I'm standing in front, and I'm reading it, and I'm looking, I'm saying, okay, there can't be, I didn't, maybe they took the container out, because there's no way a container can be on that side against that fence with those people over on that side, but I guess, as I saw the picture this morning, it is. I thought everything was over on that right side, we'll see. So you can tell, it's like, I'm trying to unpack this and listen to it, and I appreciate you standing up there. I just wanted to share those thoughts with you about what I heard from you saying, and then what I, what I read in there. Thank you for coming back up.
Thank you. Okay, please, come again.
Just trying to make this thing as clear as possible. Where the container sit, there is a concrete foundation now poured. The deck was not built prior. It has been built when Mr. Brumbach took over the job, and the foundation is there. So where that container's gonna move, it definitely was thought that it could go there without a permit. There's a concrete foundation like you would put in for your garage or a house, and it's there, so that container is sitting on it, plant on standard. And the deck is not something that was there, and we're trying to add on Trex to it. The deck was not there, and he can answer that, whether he framed the deck. Since then, all there was was that concrete patio that's on that drawing. And for this to be submitted, that's not, there's nothing accurate on that as to what we're talking about today.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Chris?
There was a prior, there was a prior application that came in for a garage and a pool, and I believe this survey is from that prior application. There was, that application was denied due to the requirement for site plan approval for the garage.
Excuse me, Chris, can I ask you a question? Whatever happened in the investigation?
It's still ongoing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. More comments? Okay, uh, anybody wanna? Oh, sorry. Officially close the, the public hearing for comments.
All right, I'm gonna make a recommendation. We deny this, this variance request, CV 5495. I'm just not, I'm not on board with this, I hope. Fifty-five thirteen, I'm sorry. I'm just not on board with this. I know we don't have any, any jurisdiction over the container, but, you know, the container's an eyesore. I value the opinions of all the surrounding neighbors that are complaining about this. And, you know, while we don't have any jurisdiction over that, I would like to see something done with that. Or maybe mainland planning can do whatever they have to do. Island planning, I'm sorry. Anyway, that's my motion.
All right, so have a motion on the floor? Have a second? All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? All right, you're denied, uh, the variance at this point. You do have the option to, uh, appeal this decision to the Glen County Board of Commissioners. All right, moving on to the next one. All right, last one. ZV 5508 327 Butler Avenue, St. Simon's Island. Considerance, consider variance to the Glen County zoning ordinance section seven zero one five to reduce the minimum side yard, side and rear yard setback from seven feet to zero feet to allow construction of a deck and built-in fireplace at 327 Butler Avenue, St. Simon's Island, parcel zero four dash zero four eight eight nine. The property is owned R six, one-family residential. Sam Schroesfire, Schroesfire, sorry. Agent for Matthew Selman, Butler Cottage LLC. From staff, please.
Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you today, we have a variance request to reduce the current rear and side yard setbacks to zero to accommodate, uh, a deck and, uh, built-in fireplace. Uh, the site is owned R six, one-family residential, where the rear and side yard setbacks are seven. And there are two open code enforcement cases on this property. And it was discovered that, uh, the original scope of the original permit was exceeded. So right here is a survey of the property. It shows deck improvements. Um, up to the top right corner, there is a green box, that is where an existing deck was. Uh, the blue square within that is an outdoor kitchen. And the blue along the right side is a fireplace. Here's the approved site plan for the building permit. Here's some pictures of the site. Showing fireplace and an outdoor, uh, built-in cabinets. As well as expansion of a deck. And here are some other conditions on the other side of another deck that, uh, is in the setback, that was not approved. Uh, there are numerous neighbors in opposition. And multiple letters, uh, have been submitted as well. Here are your possible motions. Uh, staff does not recommend approval due to a self-imposed hardship. And applicant is available as well.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, uh, any comments, questions for staff?
Uh, yeah, did you go back to the, uh, survey? Yeah, there are two fences on that, uh, west wall.
So I believe it's showing the width of the entire fence. I believe it's showing the width of the entire fence, but I'll let the applicant, uh, say.
Oh, okay. All right, that was my question.
Chris, I have a question. On the backside of this, um, there's an existing part of this house that is almost up against the fence. Do you know when that was constructed?
I do not know when that portion of the house was constructed. I'll let the applicant, uh, explain that.
I mean, I know it's existing, I just was wondering if it was an addition or, you know, was it permitted? All the good stuff. This was existing?
So there was a, or currently is an active permit on the renovations?
Yes, the active permit has since been updated for substantial improvements. But this is the site plan that was submitted in the original permit. With a swim spa and deck, uh, but the primary application was for, uh, uh, foundation repair.
This is approved site plan, the other site plan is what's actually going on, is that what you're telling me?
Yes, sir. So this, right here is what's actually the current conditions at the site.
So when it was, the permit was upgraded to substantial improvements, did the valuation change? Did it exceed the fifty percent rule, or has that been addressed?
I'm not sure of that.
I was just curious of the elevation in that area, given the houses around it are significantly higher. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head what the elevation is in that area. Okay. Any other comment for? Great, thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, if we can hear from the applicant, please. Come the podium, state your name, please.
Good morning, gentlemen. Chairman, vice chairman, board members. I'm Sam Schroesfire, uh, I'm an agent for the client, Matthew Selman. Uh, when I initially applied and submitted the application, I wasn't positive if the, uh, client was gonna be able to make the meeting today. So, uh, represented in his, on his behalf. And, uh, so, kinda going back to the original permit of this, this project, uh, we, the intent was to, to remediate the crawl space, uh, foundation repair underneath the house. Uh, we, we were initially gonna do encapsulation of the crawl space. Got in, we only had, uh, fourteen inches of, of clearance underneath, so we had to dig out all the dirt. Uh, about, got down to about two feet underneath the house. At the time, realized that all the footers needed to be replaced 'cause they were the original, back when the first, the house was moved to that spot on logs in nineteen twenty. Uh, it was placed on, on brick footers and still had the original footer. So, uh, fast forward, we, when, you know, just like an onion, when you, when you unpeel the onion, you, you find more than you bargained, that you initially bargained for. So, uh, we started uncovering things that needed to be repaired. A lot of termite damage, a lot of, a lot of, uh, other, other elements of the home that, that structurally needed, needed work. So we, uh, began to do that, and it just kinda morphed out of control, really. Not, not out of control, but it was, a lot of work had to be done to get the house into compliance. And, uh, so initially, yes, we, we, the swim spa was part of the initial, uh, emergency repair when I, when I applied for it, for the, for the permit. We were doing some of the work, and I, I needed to hurry to get the permits. So that, that's, uh, uh, filed for an emergency repair for the, for the crawl space. And then, uh, uh, since then, I've, I've, I've applied for a substantial improvement, uh, to, to encompass the rest of the work that's going on on the project. Currently, I was under the assumption that the permit was approved, the substantial permit application had been approved. I didn't realize that there was still an active, uh, investigation under that permit. Which, uh, that, that is the case? Yeah. So, given, um, you know, given the fact that there is an open investigation, I, I, I won't, uh, take questions. If you guys have any questions for me, um, if the client wants to speak all, speak also, so I'd like to give him the, the podium too.
Okay.
Okay?
Do I have any questions for?
No.
Okay, all right, yeah. Done right now, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to step forward, state your name, please, sir.
Can I have these, uh, to you guys? Yeah, thank you. Yeah, my name's Matthew Selman. Thank you for taking the time. You ever seen that movie, The Money Pit, with Tom Hanks? That's kinda what this house reminds me of. You know, as Sam had said, um, what we originally was gonna be encapsulating the crawl space has turned into, um, rotten, pretty much everything. Rotten windows, rotten siding, no sheathing on the house. I mean, this house was built in, well, it was moved to this location in nineteen twelve. This is a fifty-two hundred square foot lot. My understanding is that it was grandfathered in in two thousand and six. The prior owner just happens to be my father-in-law, who passed away two years ago. And he convinced me to buy this house from him. And, um, I have to say that, uh, your diagram up there, the red deck, the box that's there is, it's actually not correct. There was already a deck there when I bought this house. In fact, um, in your packet there, if you will flip over to, um, just past the survey, you'll see the, uh, elevation certificate. You were asking about the elevation. Uh, this lot sits at four feet above sea level, and it is prone for flooding, uh, which is one of the reasons we're asking for the variance on the setback on the, um, on the west side of the home. Because, uh, that whole area is really, it was not usable space. It's also why we didn't do an in-ground pool, and we've done this, um, swim spa because, you know, you're gonna put an in-ground pool, you know, four feet above sea level. But that area is prone to, to flooding. If you, if you take a look at that elevation certificate, and, which was, uh, completed in two thousand and eighteen, you will see, um, some pictures, building photographs. And I don't know when the structure on the north side of the property at the back of the lot was built. But I know that it's been there since two thousand and eighteen, 'cause there's pictures of it, uh, in this elevation certificate. So, um, you know, the hardship here on, you know, the east side and the north side of the property is that we're dealing with existing structures that needed repair. Uh, you can see from the pictures, if you look at the, uh, if you go past the elevation certificate and you look at the pictures, it begins with, um, the east side of the property, and it goes back into what I would call a courtyard. And if you're looking, you can see, um, towards the back, this picture right here is one I'm referring to. You can see that there clearly is a deck there where, in your diagram, it looks as if there's not a deck, but there was a deck there when we purchased the home. All of that was rotten. In fact, there's a closer picture of the, of the wood, and the fencing was all rotten as well. So we're just trying to repair what was there. You know, and so that's, and then we've got pictures of the west side of the property, prior to any work being done, and prior to us buying the home. And you can see that it really has never been usable. It's a small lot, prone to flooding, and the house had a lot of work that it needed. There's also another picture in the back of that existing structure. The hardship on the, uh, on the west side of the property is the flooding and the fact that the swim spa sits above ground. And it's really a safety issue to not have an elevated deck off of the side of that swim spa. Uh, that was our thing. But... As far as the neighbors are concerned, I will say that, um, we've spoken with the neighbors in the south of us. They have no problems. We've spoken to the neighbors directly, uh, to the west, no issue. Not heard from the neighbors to the north. Our neighbors to the east, who are here today, uh, the Isaacs, I can certainly, uh, understand that the noise and the construction on this project have been, um, an, you know, an annoyance, no doubt. And they, and nobody wants this project finished sooner than I do. I mean, we ordered windows for this house, and they took six months to come in because of, um, you know, COVID and the supply chain issues. And, um, it's, it's been ongoing a lot longer than we had hoped. However, in February, I reached out to, you know, Clark Isaac, uh, via telephone, and asked if he would give me approval to, there's a wall between our homes, eight-foot block wall. If we could use that wall, and it's in lieu of, of the fencing that was there, it basically sits very close to the property line. You can see right there where the property line is, the columns on that wall. If we could use that side of the wall and finish it and take the deck out to it, he said, "Sure, not a problem." Now, when, uh, this outdoor fireplace was modeled, that created some issues, which I can understand. That was originally not where we wanted to do that, um, fireplace, but... So, um, that being said, that's, uh, that's where we are with this.
What is your, with the substantial improvement? I got several questions here, actually. With the substantial improvement, what is your, uh, estimated renovation costs?
It's under the fifty percent. We just modeled the, um, the estimates.
What, what is, what is that number?
Do you have that number, Sam? I think it's, yeah. Of course, we just got a new assessment in the mail, um, and I about fell over when I got that, because the property value doubled effectively in one year. So, but, um, we, that number is, uh, it's something we looked at. And that, that's part of the issue with this lot is, you know, it's small, it's, uh, in a flood zone, you can't build up. Um, yeah, it's historic. I mean, it may be one of the most historic properties on the island. I mean, uh, my mother-in-law has said it probably should make its way into the historic registry. I mean, it was owned by Lefty Butler, that was, Butler Field is named after, and she's got all this history, she's told me about the house. I mean, she dates it back to the Waycross Colony, when they rolled it down the street, placed it where it is. So it's got a lot of history, but it's got a lot of issues because of it. And the homes that have been built around it, quite frankly, they've built the, those lots up. And the drainage issues that we deal with are because of our neighboring lots. And so we've, I mean, I don't know how much we've spent, Sam can probably tell you, but we put in now two sump pumps, and I think, uh, six or seven French drains. And, um, you know, so we're doing everything we can to try to get the water off of this property. And we've constructed a block wall, is a fence around the property, predominantly to try to protect the foundation of the home if there's another storm surge like the house had in Irma.
And I'm, what, do you have that number?
Yes, sir. Uh, it's two hundred and forty-three thousand. The, the assessment, uh, was five hundred and eighty?
Yeah.
Five hundred and eighty thousand.
Based on my math, on the improved value, the, the renovation shouldn't exceed two hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and fifty bucks.
Right. It's, most of this, excuse me, is repair, is. It's, most of this, excuse me, is repaired, is rotten, and, you know.
And I, I agree with that, and the ordinance is, you know, states that you can, you know, if it is in the setback, you are allowed to maintain it. But then where the caveat is, is if you have to tear it down, then it has to conform or have to have a variance. And I'm looking at one of these pictures that you submitted, on the back of the house, it looks like there is a living space that was right up near the fence that was torn down. So, you know, just because it was there and torn down doesn't mean you can put it back.
Oh, it wasn't torn down.
So, that, that living space is still there?
Absolutely.
That enclosed space is still there?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Because I, that, I didn't see how that was indicated on here. Okay.
Well, which, which picture are you looking at? There was a lean-to.
The front, yeah.
Yeah, there was a, oh, yeah, that's still there. Yep. It was, it's always been there.
Where, where is, where is that on this plan?
Cliff. It's.
Roof going back to the line.
Right, yeah, right here.
Okay, so that's right in the, okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the one that he was saying.
That goes all, all the way to the roof.
Yeah.
Do you know when that was built?
No, sir, I do not. Well, it had to have been, this house was purchased in 2008, and, you know.
That's when, that's when Jerry Wilcox then bought it?
That's when, that's when Crash bought the house. Was in, it was in '08. And at that time, his daughter Caroline would have been, I don't know, five years old. So, I think that was her, you know, where she lived. I, I don't know when that was built, but.
The previous, according to the permit records, the previous owner had a building permit in 1991. And I believe that's when that fourth was built.
In 90, in 91, didn't, didn't we have setback rules in?
Yeah, should've.
Chris?
Yes, we did.
So, so if a permit was issued for that, it was built out of compliance right away, then, correct? Okay.
All right, you can back.
Go ahead. I have a couple of questions. Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Sam, thank you very much for showing me the property the other day. I appreciated the hospitality. Matthew, sir, I've got a couple of questions. I, I guess, why would you, why would you have built that deck off the spa to the left into the setback to the fence without getting a variance first? What was your, well, believe me, I've been thinking about this since I came to visit the property and, and taking on my notes, and I, I want to make sure it comes across as, as not adversarial, because I'm, I'm not adversarial about it. I just need this information to help me understand. What was your expectation of, of me, I'm not even speaking for them, what would be your expectation of me to already have a deck built into the variance and then say, if we're having a couple of coffee, hey, Mike, I already did it, you know, what the heck, but, you know, will you, will you approve it for me? Will you give me the variance? The deck's already there.
I wasn't aware that the deck was gonna serve as an issue as far as into the setbacks. The swim spa, clearly, we knew it had to be seven feet off of the property line.
And it looks like it is.
It is.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, so that's perfect. But it's like, when Sam showed me the property the other day, I'm, I'm saying like, wait a second, like, wait a minute, there's no setbacks on this property. I'm like, I'm like, if there was a scaffolding along the wall, I'm walking the wall. There's, there's no setbacks in this property anymore. That can't, that can't be right. I've got, I, it can't be accurate. And, but the more I'm, after I went home, after spending time with Sam, and then going over things, and so I guess that was my, one of my questions, I'd written down, like, what was your expectation of me personally?
I wasn't aware the deck was in violation of the setback.
So, who are you putting that off on? Him? Excuse me for pointing, Sam. You're putting it off on him, that you, you, you built those joists and, and you put the decking out to the wall, which is like over the setback?
Yeah, I, I wasn't aware that.
It's your house.
Yeah, that, that a deck, I knew the swim spa had to be seven feet off.
But it's good, the swim spa's good. Let's not get, and, believe me, I'm.
But the deck itself.
I'm not against you, I'm, I'm one of the taxpayers like you. I got my tax bill the other day, too. But like, I, I'm just like, was so beside myself, like, man, like, I'm serving the community here, and like, you're putting me on the spot. You want me to?
Yeah.
What do you want me to do?
All I can say, I guess, is I was ignorant in the fact that a deck was in violation of the setback.
Okay, fine. Okay, that's good, sir. Hey, Chris, can you bring up that picture about the fireplace?
That's the existing fence. Or the block fence.
Yeah. I know that you mentioned that you had some agreement with the neighbor. I gotta tell you, just says, I gotta add some humor to this for myself, because I am really beside myself trying to figure all this out. When I worked for the Department of Defense, lived in Puerto Rico, went back to look at my house, and the neighbor extended their house, we have concrete houses, and connected his house to my house. It was like, I got there and it was like, what is that house doing, connected to my house now? And I, when I looked at that, I'm saying like, it looked to me like it was against the wall, and so I'm not sure that's neither here nor there. But then when I got home and looked at it more, it seemed to me, and I could be wrong by the look on it, were the bricks on the top of that wall taken off so that the chimney could go flush against the wall? Modified. So, like, was that part of the agreement with the neighbor? We're gonna modify your wall to put our fireplace here? Not even talking about, do we want a fireplace, do we not? It's like, did you guys modify somebody's property without asking? Once again, expectation.
Well, I was given misinformation about this wall.
Okay.
I was told by the prior owner that this was a shared wall, and that there was no need to ask for permission. Even though we did ask for permission back in February before this fireplace, I was told that that was not needed. And this has, you know, this was from the owner, my mother-in-law, who lived in this house since 2008, well before the neighbors moved in in 2016 or 17. Now, if you look at the survey, I would today say, I agree with you. There's no way that this wall can be on our property. I think the columns of the wall are on our, are on the line, but the wall itself. So, that's where I, I said, I understand where the neighbors are coming from on this fireplace and the location of it. Yeah.
And I didn't, and, and they didn't mention to me about the brick. This is something that I saw, it's in my house. All right, thank you very much. And Sam, I'll just end it with, I still want to tell you, that, that tabby, this isn't an infomercial, that tabby is impeccable. I thought that was so cool. That was just a real nice job that you did on that. Thanks. Thank you, Matthew, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I got a couple of questions. The, the pictures you provided us, it shows a wood fence around the property, there's a block fence around the property, the entire property now?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm just gonna be a little bit of a devil's advocate just for a second. I could, if somebody didn't know, you had other, originally, these pictures here from 2018, you had a deck going through the fence. I could see somebody not in the business, understanding, ah, well, it was like, it was already done like that, so I'm okay. Unfortunately, that, you know, that's, that's not the, not the case, but, I mean, I, I could, I can understand from you as a homeowner, this is what was there, I mean, we can add, we can add another five feet to it, because, but, because it's okay, but it wasn't okay, it snuck between the cracks. And unfortunately, there's, we in a pickle. But that, I just want, I was just verifying that the, these pictures, there is that block fence all the way around the house. That's all, that's all I've got.
Any other comments or questions?
At this point, I'm here from everybody else.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, I'd like to open the floor up for public comments. First, I'd like to hear from anyone who is in favor of the project. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the other side. Is there anyone here to speak against? Please come to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Gentlemen, my name is Clark Isaac. I live at 331 Butler Avenue. My wife and I, Linda, have lived there for seven years. The current owner of the property, a business, has owned the property for two years. During that two years, it has been mostly short-term rentals and construction. It has not been pleasant. I don't know if I really need to say a whole lot, you've asked a lot of good questions. But my reasons for opposition are multiple, and some of those are the increased possibility of a fire risk. The applicant has applied to build a fireplace. As you've noticed on those pictures, if you go back to the fireplace photo, and he's going to build a pizza oven, which he, Mr. Showfire here told the building inspector that the other part was a pizza oven. It's on record in the documents here that we've obtained. And my insurance company said potentially they could raise my insurance rates or could cancel my insurance because of additional fire hazard. That fireplace is closer to my house than it is to his house. A wood-burning fireplace could contribute to smoke or soot in the neighborhood. And by code, the top of fireplaces are supposed to be certain elevation above adjacent structures so that they'll properly draw. And this thing, if you look at the picture of the fireplace? Look how low that is. I looked down on the top of the chimney from my living room window. So, and that's not really the finished product. It'll look a lot better if he were to finish it. But his problem is, if you looked at that carefully, he has actually crossed the property line by four inches onto my property. He asked for permission to stucco the back of the wall, and I gave him permission, because it's my wall, completely. But he took the liberty of encroaching, and he will move it. The, also, the thing that I'm concerned about is the diminution of the property value because of a, of a private nuisance. Having something like that, it could effectively devalue my property, not only the fact that it's there, but the additional traffic that it's gonna drive from all the renters. He is building a short-term rental on steroids. He's got an eight-by-16 hot tub on the left-hand side, a built-in kitchen in the back, and a pizza oven and a fireplace on the right-hand side. And that is so low, every time it floods, that whole thing is gonna flood. If you look carefully in that picture, the drain is at the level of the bottom of the fire pit. There's a drain in the ground there. Also, in the staff report, under ordinance provisions, I strongly disagree with the finding of the staff that if this, if relief is granted, it would not cause substantial detriment to the public good. Also, I would like to ask the staff, when the updated permit was issued? We got a complete list of the records in. There's no list of a record of an updated permit being issued as of this date, which was obtained by my neighbor's lawyer, who gave it to me. So, I did not see any of the updated drawings showing the revised approved plan, and I've been digging pretty hard, and I've not been able to get it. So, in closing, gentlemen, you guys are the gatekeeper, and you know it. Variances are necessary in certain circumstances, but should be rare. If the zone ordinance is to have meaning, it must be respected and enforced. Granting this variance would create conditions that are out of character for the King City neighborhood. Granting this variance would encourage others to ask for forgiveness rather than ask for permission, as this applicant has done. I respectfully request that you deny this application.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Isaac? Mr. Isaac? We might have some questions for you. So, just in short, your main opposition is the, the fireplace and the pizza oven. Is that safe to say?
Well, I was thinking about this, and I wondered who's getting the worst shaft on this deal, which, the neighbor to the west is a non-resident neighbor. He's, he lives in Texas, I guess. His, his address is Texas. We have not met him. He's gonna have a hot tub and a hot tub party if he's ever there on the west side. The neighbor behind me has got an outdoor kitchen in his setback, and I get the pizza oven and the fireplace. Also, while you call me back up here, the deck on the right rear was completely torn down, the non-compliant deck, to the ground in dirt. They were working in the front yard setback on the porch and completely rebuilt the front porch, not the roof structure, but the decking and everything else. They took it down to the bare ground almost. So, they've been working on all sides of this house, in the non-conforming areas of the property. They even worked in the area in the rear of the property. My neighbor tells me, I'm giving you hearsay information, but he could come up here and explain what he knows, if he wishes to, about the, the lean-to shed that's in the back that overhangs the property line. Plus, the new deck that he built crosses my property line by four inches also. I've studied the survey, I've drawn string lines, and I've got it marked. So, I have hired a surveyor, and as soon as he can get out there, we're gonna verify what he has done. And the corner posts of the fence, the masonry fence that he built, I think he built it right on top of my corner of my property. So.
That's all I just was, some, some other, the other guys may have questions. I have no questions.
Make any questions?
I have a question for staff.
Can I respond?
You'll, you'll have an opportunity to come up, yes, sir.
All right, isn't a, isn't a fireplace supposed to be, a chimney on a fireplace supposed to be built two foot higher than anything around, ten, within 10 feet?
I believe that's a fire code. I can't speak to that, but the fire chief would, would be able to.
I think that's a building code.
It is, it is a building code.
Say what?
It is a building code.
Yeah, and everything around that is within 10 foot of that top of the chimney. Wouldn't that chimney have to go on up?
The Fire Marshal probably has some say-so in it, but it is a, it is a standard Georgia building code.
That's what I thought. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Chris. All right, while we're still in the public hearing phase, anyone else want to come up and speak against?
Damn, got a bunch of them.
Hi, my name's Mark Podlin. I've lived in the neighborhood, King City, Butler Mews neighborhood, since 1994, so almost 30 years. And I've seen changes in the neighborhood from a typical residential neighborhood to now what amounts to beach cottages being rented out constantly, and traffic up and down the street, people running at high speed who aren't residents in the area who are using this as their party zone. And I, I live at 407 Butler Avenue, which is about three houses from this location that's being considered right now. I'm friends with Mr. Isaac, and he's asked me to come speak about this. I went and looked at the property, and I am extremely concerned that this is being turned into an entertainment complex rather than a residential home. And one of the reasons for that is, you know, the extension of the decks brings people celebrating and drinking and talking loud at night right up to, right up to the property line. And that's objectionable to everybody in the neighborhood, and we have other neighbors here to talk about the same issues. This is losing its residential character. It's becoming basically a, a big hotel, and the activities are inconsistent with the residential area, and this is further inconsistent with the residential complex that we live in. I've seen this area change, as I mentioned, drastically, to the point where last year, my next-door neighbor bought their house the same way this fellow bought his house in order, in order to rent it out. And they put a swimming pool in the back, a very small swimming pool. We have children screaming all day long, making our house almost unlivable, to the point where I'm gonna bring a lawsuit against the neighbor for maintaining a private nuisance, and allowing that to go on and on and on with visitors who don't live there all the time. And I went out to speak to one of the neighbors, and I said, you know, you need to make your children be quiet. And she said, I, I turned my back and went back toward the house, she said, well, you're a good neighbor. I turned around, I said, well, you're not my neighbor. You're renting this house out for. I turned around and said, well, you're not my neighbor. You're renting this house out for one night or two nights. You don't live here, and that's the problem with building a fireplace this close, and the deck extending the deck to the property line. You've got people who don't care about being good neighbors, who, the noise from their activity will totally disturb the residents on each side. It's exaggerated and exacerbated by the fact that the deck is now even closer to the property line than it would have been later. People even whispering and drinking beer outside at night at this house that close to Mr. Isaac's property or the other neighbor's property is going to be disturbing them all night long if they're sleeping, and their bedroom's up on this side. Now, on top of that, if you're, if you're burning pizzas and you're, and you're having a fireplace, the smoke is going to go right into, right into the Isaac's house. And to set this kind of precedent where somebody can come in after the fact and say, hey, I want to build a fireplace anywhere I want to build it on my property line, notch into his property, notch into his wall, cross his property, is trespassing. And, and there's going to be a constant private nuisance created by the existence of this fireplace that's going to totally annoy anybody else who comes in this house. And as Mr. Isaac said, it's going to diminish his property value permanently by having this horrible thing existing right next to him. Uh, you know, on our side of the, on our side of the neighborhood, we've got the dumpsters, and they make all sorts of noise, and there's no way to get around that. But this is something we can stop right now, because you all have the power to stop it. And we ask that you help us maintain the character of this residential neighborhood and keep it from turning further into an entertainment district, uh, which is becoming, unfortunately, especially if something like this is allowed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Morning, board. Uh, my name's Britt Smith. I'm the attorney for Jonathan Stoner, who lives in the house that's right behind, uh, this improvement y'all have been asking about, where the hang, uh, the back porch is hanging over there, the back improvement. So, as we've, y'all have asked questions about that. I, they can answer when it was built. But it looks to me, and you can tell from this picture, that they have improved it. You know, there's new walls, there's new windows. You know, I'm not the expert on that. Y'all have asked good questions about that, about, you know, if it's already, if it was, you know, grandfathered in, so to speak. Can you make an improvement to it, you know, a substantial improvement if it's grandfathered in? That's a whole nother issue, because, you know, again, their permit today in front of y'all is for the setbacks for the deck, the, uh, what else is there? The fireplace. That's what their application says. Doesn't even address the setback in the back. So, I'll leave that for another, another day. But I'm here to address, and I agree with everything that's been said, but I'm looking at it from a legal perspective. And y'all, as a board, are charged with granting or denying variances. And there's specific laws about what you can and can't do. And the Supreme Court of Georgia has said that a board of zoning appeals discretion is tightly controlled by the ordinance. So, if it meets the ordinance, you can grant it. If it doesn't, you can't. You know, that's where your discretion comes in. If it meets it, and y'all decide y'all don't want to grant it, that's your discretion. In this case, the county has set out four different, you know, five different things that have to be met before this, uh, variance can be granted. And per the staff, two of those are not met. There's no special procured circumstances with this property. And I pulled up a map of GIS showing all the properties around this. They're all about the same size. There's some of them bigger, but there's several of them that have this same exact size. So, there's nothing particular about this property. The second one is that there's a non-conforming structure was the result of the owner. So, because of that, you know, if y'all's charge is that you have to, you know, look at these and whether these are met, and then y'all can grant it, we have two of the four, five that have to be met that are not met. So, for that reason, you know, just looking at solely at whether or not you can or cannot do this, I would argue that the Supreme Court of Georgia has said that y'all have to follow what the ordinance says. And in this case, they haven't met all the standard of the, to grant the variance. So, that's why we would ask this to be denied, simply for that reason in and of itself. So... And my client, Mr. Stoner, could talk about the overhanging back. Y'all even had...
Thank you for hearing from us. Jonathan Stoner, one thirty-one Grove Lane. So, I sympathize with you, because doing a project is very difficult. Uh, when I purchased this house, we spent well over a million dollars in renovations, uh, with local construction company, went through the permanent process, the details. There's a lot to know. There's a lot to know. Uh, but the way that we went about it was we ensured that we hired people to protect it. We went through the proper permits. We went through the proper investigative states that we needed to know of what we could and could not do on the lot. We kept the setback at seven feet in the rear. It would have been advantageous for me to not do that, because I would have much larger rooms in our addition that we put back there. Uh, but rules are rules. Uh, I'm a licensed realtor. It's what I do for a living. I'm investigating these things daily. Uh, and it's one of those things where if we don't uphold those policies and rules, we have expansion that encroaches onto the intent of what we want for our community. The problem now, as for instance with the spa, it's an elevated deck. Well, I have a wood fence along that back wall, which then they put the, you know, border wall in front of now, and it almost touches, and then the roof line hangs over the back of my fence. So, we talked about water being an issue for them. Once it rains, it comes off that roof and then into my, my backyard now. Uh, and then, of course, the wall holds that in there now. You know, there's nowhere really to go, so the water just puddles up there. Uh, the elevated deck now makes my fence that much shorter for privacy, so as you get out of a hot tub, you're basically looking into my backyard. You know, it's, it's tough, because the intent does seem to be, as a realtor looking at this, the intent does seem to be to make it a rental. Uh, obviously, all these amenities are very beneficial for that, uh, and that's fine. If people choose to do that, I have clients that do it all the time. The problem that I have is that we are trying to violate rules and policies for profit. We need to do this because maybe it's a money fit, like you mentioned. Um, unfortunately, the go-ahead process, I've never met this man. No one's ever come and talked to me. They've never said, hey, we're thinking about doing X. You know, there could have been maybe some community solutions as far as what I'm considering. It might be the water drainage, things like that. We could have worked through that as neighborhood. The deck issue for me is a problem, because now that's that much closer to my house than they are. And if I'm abiding by those setbacks to give them their respective buffer, I would expect that that would be done for me as well. And when I bought here in St. Simon's, I have other houses in Georgia. When I bought in St. Simon's, I knew what those rules were, because I took the time to look those up before I spent a million dollars on a project. And by doing that, I protected my neighbors and protected myself and my investment. Um, the existing structure we talked about earlier, the zoning walls were already in place prior to this back of the house even being built. So, we started a process down the road way back when when we said, well, it doesn't matter what the code rules are. We'll just build what we want. And we're continuing that process today. And so, if we approve this, we're only saying that that's okay to do things wrong consecutively. And that's causing more and more problems as we now look, because if we'd have stopped this a long time ago and not built that first addition to the back line, they would have been very aware of what the setbacks were, and we wouldn't have these additional objects there in the first place. And I wouldn't have drainage into my property and so on and so forth. So, enforcing the rule at its point is the protection process throughout. And I think that the island has needs for variances at times. This is not one of those. These variances are self-imposed problems. They were ignored what the rules and policies were, and it's now caused a hardship to them monetarily and time-wise, because we didn't do our homework. So, I would request that you deny it. I do sympathize with the cause and the cost that goes with that. But I do think that, you know, you gotta know what you're getting in before you get in it. So, that's my position.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
So, yeah, one, one question. Do, do you remember when, well, I don't guess you were here, though, when that thing was built?
No, sir.
But...
From what I can see, just, you know, from what I have the privilege to, you know, as a realtor and some of these policies and the tax records and all, you know, we think it was sometime between the nineties and early two thousands.
So, I mean, I, I do know that there is a code that, that says that your water cannot encroach onto somebody else's property and cause damage. I mean, you know, as builders, we have to abide by that, so...
He had, he had done some things already, uh, as far as, I don't know where those are, as far as the drains. So, you know, that's something I think that can be worked through. You know, I'm not, I'm not too concerned on that edge, because we did keep our seven-foot setback. So, it is a planted area for us, which does help tridom absorb, but you still don't want, you know, puddles everywhere, you know? So, I think there's, there's a solution there. Um, the concern for me is not necessarily just on this. It's the addition to this remodel, this back roof. They raised now the roof. There's more living space there. So, what's grandfathered is not the same as what it once was. Well, I understand that, but the permit wasn't there for that. But, uh, I should...
No, you can, you'll have your chance to respond with it. Right, any other questions?
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank y'all. And again, you know, just to say legally, I'm not sure y'all have the power to grant this based on staff recommendation. My closure will be on that. Any questions for...
No questions.
Oh, thank you. Okay, anyone else want to get up and, uh, uh, speak against? No one else? Okay, that's where you'd like to come back up and respond to?
Yeah, I would. Um, again, you know, we're, we're dealing with non-conforming structures that were pre-existing to my ownership of the home. There've been a lot of assumptions, you know, from the opposing side. Um, number one, you know, Mr. Isaac's not a certified surveyor. There's questions about where the property line is on that wall. Number two, there've been assumptions that this is going to be a rental house long-term, and I'm here to tell you right now, I bought this house from Jerry Wilcoxson so that it would say in our family permanently, and my wife and I, who live in Canton, Georgia, are intend to move down here when my sixteen-year-old son goes to college in two years. What I do and how I hold the property is clearly in my right as a property owner. Whether it's held in a business name or personal name, my wife's name, it does not, that has, it's none of your business, as a matter of fact. That's my right as a property owner. So, um, I understand that King City has turned into a vacation rental area, but it's not just my property. It's the entire area that is close to the pier, that is close to the restaurants. So, you know, um, I feel like, you know, I'm being treated as the scapegoat here, like I'm the only person in the community that has a short-term vacation rental. You know, so, that's, I just wanted to share that with you, and, you know, I hope that, it's kind of mind-boggling to me that you took, I took a property that was built in nineteen twelve that was rotting and improved it to the point where everybody else's property value around it's going to go up. The tax base for the county on this house's property goes up, and there's these, these unmerited, uh, folks on the opposing side. I am certainly, you know, if, if you talk to my neighbors back at our primary residence, we have great relationships, and you know what? We resolve issues because we talk to each other. And I've got text strings, countants text strings. Well, I've said to, uh, the Isaacs, can we, how can we work this out amicably? And they basically said, we're past that. There is no more room for that. And, and I think, you know, it, it leaves a bad taste in my mouth. I like to have neighbors that you can wave at and be, be nice to and friends with, and, uh, that certainly hasn't been the attitude. So, that's, that's all I have to say. So, I appreciate your consideration on this.
Great. If I can chat with you again, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, sure.
Chris, can you go back to the picture that shows the, the deck and everything, please? Thank you. Yeah, that, that one right there. So, when I was talking about the expectations before, and I was listening to folks, I, I, am zeroed in on if that deck, the, the deck between the hot tub and the wall goes away, and I don't know, uh, in front of the, the step up there into the hot tub, where the, where the front setback is there, and if the deck is curtailed in the back, um, to the setback. And then if the wood burning fireplace goes away, and it becomes a gas fireplace.
Right.
My only personal thing I would interject here is I hold off on air conditioning as long as I can. And if I were your neighbor, of all the other comments, one comment that wasn't, wasn't made was that I felt it would be a great infringement on me to not be able to keep my windows open, because your smoke would damage my house. And so, that's, that's only a personal thing that I would put in that just hasn't been, just for something, I don't know if you have, have, have thought about, but I don't, and, and what I'm asking, I don't know if that's, if that makes it any better, but I'm just looking, saying, okay, because you, you get a sense of, of where I was when we first chatted. Um, that overhang in the back, if that's grandfathered and stuff, and you're working out with a gentleman about water and that kind of thing, um, and the same thing with the, and, uh, I, I don't know, I don't understand a pizza oven. If that was a wood-fired pizza oven, then obviously it would be the same thing as the fireplace situation, and then maybe the pizza oven goes away, or you put in one of those inserts that is, it's an electrical kind of pizza oven, and you're offering as an amenity to people who rent or to you and your wife and family, that they can cook pizza in that kind of outdoor pizza stove. And I don't understand, uh, exactly what the kitchen, because we weren't talking much about that, the outdoor kitchen in the back. But I was just throwing that out to you to give you a sense. Like I said before, not adversarial against, I just want, I'm, I'm, what was expected of me to, to listen and, and rule on, and as I was sitting here, I was just thinking of those things. And I just speak, and I just speak for myself.
I appreciate that. That, I actually made the same recommendation, uh, to the Isaacs about the, uh, gas rather than a wood burning, um, fireplace. Um, and, um, you know, the decking here, clearly, the deck, the purpose of that deck, um, you know, that's an eight-foot wall, and, um, you know, so we looked at how high should, can we make this wall to try to, uh, give us the privacy, uh, having a spa there? Uh, again, the property sits at four feet above sea level, so everybody around us has, has, yeah, they're going to be able to see down in that, because they've been able to build up, and this house you can't build up on, um, because of, you know, where it sits. Now, is that, that's no fault of mine, um, but I, I agree with you. Those would be concessions that we would, you know, certainly go along with if, you know? Um, I'm, I am concerned about the safety of that swim spa. Um, you know, if my kids or grandkids were to fall off the side of that, and they're not, and that deck not be there, there's, there's a fair amount of, you know, and what harm is that doing? I mean, that, that's, that's my point. You'll, as a homeowner in this area, you will never see these decks. No one will be able to visually see those decks from the road. That is a solid eight-foot block wall in the front. And what, on this side, you'll have fencing that will make that as private as possible. You will never see it.
I don't disagree with that. However, I think you're learning enough to understand that it's not legal, as it is. And I didn't want to get too personal, but I was going to ask you, like, wouldn't you want to do something to that wall if you and your wife? And I'll just leave it at that. You and your wife are going to be in the hot tub together? Like, you're sitting in the hot tub, like, you can look into the neighbors and, I mean, wouldn't you? I mean, just in, I just, you don't have to answer that. I'm just saying, like, as I was trying to think of things to throw out to you, if you would thought, because I know you're under a lot of duress. So, I walked over there. There's great construction going on.
The purpose of that swim spa, and I don't know if you've ever been in a swim spa, but it's for exercise. There's a jet on the front of that swim spa that you can swim against, and it's not to sit out there in the hot tub together. It's to get some exercise in as we get older. Um, that's, that's low impact. You know, my wife has a rare bone disease, and so...
I, I understand. My brother-in-law just put one in, and, and when I looked at it, I was pretty excited about it, and I thought it was, and I, his is dual in terms of, yeah, Mike, if you don't want to swim, you can just kind of sit and, and rest in here, and it's, it's nice also. So, that's what my, that's what I was thinking back, like I said, not getting too personal.
Yeah.
You know, I think you'd like some privacy, and by bringing that wall up might be a way to, if you get to that point. But in any case, okay, I appreciate you.
These assumptions about this being a vacation rental party house are totally misfounded.
Either here nor there for me.
Uh, yeah, that doesn't, for me, the use of the house, as long as it meets the ordinances in there, is, doesn't apply much to me. But what does apply is rules are rules. You know, you mentioned that what's it matter? Nobody's going to see the deck. What if I'm growing marijuana in my house and you can't see it?
Does that make it legal? Does that make it okay?
No, no.
Yeah.
So, it's a similar situation here. Just because you can't see it doesn't make it okay, in, in my opinion. Um, and, and, you know, when I'm, I'm not here to, personally, I'm not here to debate the use of the house.
All right.
I'm here to, uh, assess what has been done or what is proposed to be done within the ordinances or, or however it applies, our ordinances apply to it. Um, so that, that's kind of where I'm at on it, but, thank you. Anybody else got anything?
Yeah, I'm good.
You're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, still in the public comment section. Anybody else have anything they would like to add, either way? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we'll close the public comment section, uh, and give it to the board for any discussion.
Somebody make a motion.
If you want to take a motion, I can make one.
Yeah, if we want, yeah, um, if you guys have a, an idea of someone else to make a motion, or we don't have any more comments. I think we've kind of kicked it down the road as far as we can.
Make a motion to deny ZV five-five-oh-eight.
Okay, got a motion on the floor. Have a second? Have a second? Okay, motion and second. Uh, all those in favor of the motion on the floor? All those opposed? All right, you are denied the variance. Uh, you do have the right to appeal to the Glencounty Board of Commissioners, uh, and then they can make a decision. Thank y'all, everyone, for coming out. Um, okay, anybody else got anything? Staff have anything? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank y'all for coming. We'll adjourn this meeting.